I'd like to call this meeting to order, please, for the Norco City Council. We'll have a roll call now.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Burwin Hanna?
Yes.
All present.
Okay, at this time, we will recess to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add one potential litigation item to the closed session agenda.
Okay. We need a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call, roll, for vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
We will recess to closed session. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the public session. A report from the city attorney on items taken in closed session.
Yes, in closed session, the council considered what was listed on the agenda, as well as adding an agenda item concerning potential litigation, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll have the pleas of allegiance by Councilmember Greg Newton and the invocation by Councilmember Robin Grunmeyer.
All right, please join me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight asking that you would be with us, Lord, as we, city staff, continue to make sure that our city is operational and meeting the needs of our residents. And, Lord, we'd like to thank you for our staff that, in our public safety, that have been continuing their jobs, Lord, to make sure that the needs of our residents are met in this difficult time. Lord, I pray that as we make decisions, that you would give us wisdom to make the correct decisions and that they would benefit the residents. Lord, just be with us as we are all probably growing weary of our circumstances. Give us strength and help us to remember, Lord, that we do have hope in you and we have hope in the future, and that as we stay home and stay the course, that we'll get through this and we'll be stronger and better. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Now, they'll have the city clerk to give the instructions on public comments for this evening's agenda.
At this time, any persons viewing wishing to address the city council regarding matters on the agenda or not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk at citycouncil@ci.narco.ca.us so that you may be recognized. Your comments will be read and into the record. The city council will not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Thank you.
With that, now we'll move on to the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion, to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull any of the items on the consent counter? We have a motion and a second, but we need to... Did we have any speaker cards, Madam Clerk?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll do the vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Item three, there was no items pulled, so we'll bypass that one. Item four is legislative matters. No-
No. Public comment.
Oh, public comments, sorry about that. Public comments, and we've already read that part, so do we have any cards or letters?
Yes, we have one to read into the record.
Okay.
You each have a copy. There is an attachment for you to review during, as I read. Mayor Hanna and city council members, attached is NHA's annual list of the top 10 trails for 2020. We had planned on taking this to the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission, but since the meeting for this month was canceled, we are bringing it directly to council. We realize that the financial picture for city funds, and especially for Measure Our Money, is changing rapidly, and that Measure Our Funds will be lower for the short-term future. However, we are hoping that something can be addressed from our list, which you have in front of you. The items on our list that we would like you to consider is the area around Sixth Street and Crestview. The trail fence is being done with the vinyl on all of Sixth Street, but when you get to Crestview, it is unclear how horses should proceed from that point. We typically stay on the south side of Sixth Street and then cross mid-block by Pike's Peak Park, where there is trail, but then the trail is not marked on into Ingalls Park and the trail that goes to Pumpkin Rock. People do ride here often, and I'm thinking of Easter sunrise service. When a number of us ride that way, it can get mixed in with the cars going to the same event. We would like to see the fencing put in all the way to Ingalls Park. Thank you for considering this item. Bonnie Slager, President, NHA. And there's no further comment?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bonnie, for sending that list in. Okay, item four is legislative matters. No new evidence will be heard from the public. The public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. This is for the city attorney.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, item five, city council discussion item. Order of presentation for discussion items. Staff report presentation. Council questions of staff. Public speakers in favor, against, or neutral. Council discussion in action. Item A is adopting vehicle miles traveled thresholds of significance for purposes of analyzing transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act. Steve, I believe this is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a requirement that all cities in the state now have to start using come July 1 of this year. And what it is, is a traffic analysis for proposed development that looks at vehicle miles traveled thresholds as opposed to looking at level of service impacts that have been the typical purpose of traffic studies in the past. And the difference between them is a level of service analysis would look at a project and the number of trips that would be generated by the project, and how that would impact the city's intersections and streets in terms of number of trips and what kind of congestion that would create for the respective streets and intersections in the city. And based on that, there would be conditions of approval to do such things as widening streets or to improve and upgrade intersections. What goes into effect July 1 is a completely different way of looking at it. Now, traffic analysis are going to have to look at vehicle miles traveled, which is basically how many miles are going to be, how many miles of travel are going to be created by a proposed project and to... I actually have a graph here that will explain it, which I should have given in your staff report, and I apologize for that. But if you look at this graph, and this is from a study by ARCOG, it looks at all of the cities in the region and the number of vehicle miles traveled by residents going to jobs. And if you look at Norco, it's fairly high above the average for Western Riverside Council of Governments and for the regional government as well. The idea of doing a vehicle miles traveled assessment is to reduce the length of trips so there's less miles being traveled, with the ultimate goal of being less vehicles altogether. The difference between the types of mitigations is for vehicle miles traveled, the mitigations would be such things like contributing to mass transit improvement, putting in bus stops, putting in bike trails and bike parking facilities, as opposed to the previous mitigations that I spoke about where it would be street improvements to increase the rate of flow and make less of an impact on the city's intersections. That being said, SEQA now is going to require the vehicle miles traveled analysis. The good news for Norco is that while this is a requirement of SEQA, it does not preclude a city from also allowing and requiring a level of service analysis whereby we can still get our street improvement conditions that we need to apply to certain projects. So, the resolution that you have before you is adopting both. So, after July 1, traffic studies will have to do a vehicle miles traveled analysis along with a level of service analysis, and so there will be a combination of mitigations for both of those impacts and whatever the mitigation is to reduce that down to a level. The VMT analysis has the overall intent of ultimately, if you look at that graph, to reduce Norco and similar cities like that, to reduce the VMT average down to the ARCOG average or even below. So with that, this resolution will go into effect immediately. After July 1, all traffic studies will have to do both analyses. Up until July 1, we will still allow for, we will still accept a level of service analysis and the respective mitigations. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Kevin?
How did they come up with this?
Well, it's, uh, ARCOG did a study. It's about 125 pages long, and what it does is it looks at census data and the amount of travel that has to be done by residents to their respective places of work. And if you look at that graph, cities like Norco and Corona, Harupa Valley, the people tend to live farther away from their jobs and therefore are traveling more vehicle miles to get there. The idea is to, with VMT analysis, is to encourage facilities that would promote people leaving their cars and taking mass transit or using alternate forms of transportation like bikes and, while it's good, it's a global view of reducing vehicles. It's not very applicable to Norco because we still have to address the impact to our intersections due to the level of service analysis that I talked about. But it's based upon transportation analysis zones, which is the basis of the traffic modeling program that ARCOG has adopted for the entire county. We use it. Some cities have their own. Corona has their own. Larger cities have their own, but we use the county's traffic modeling system. And it is based upon those analysis zones, and cities like Norco tend to have a, I can't think of the terminology, but their traffic analysis zones are considered impacted because the residents have to travel farther to get to their jobs.
Okay. They count bicycles?
Bicycles, for instance, projects in the future that will be looked favorably upon and will have mitigations to help reduce VMT. Such things can include bike trails and bike parking facilities. They encourage, this study encourages mixed-use development as a way to solve some of that VMT analysis. Whether it does or not, they've, you know, they've calculated that it should, so that's one way of doing it. The problem with Norco is we don't really have, we don't have access to, immediate access to commuter trail, trains, and such things, and our bus routes are not frequent enough to qualify as good mass transit to move a lot of people. So, we're kind of in a zone where we just don't have a lot to qualify for VMT mitigation, but we still get the impact from the generation of trips.
You know, I don't know if I buy this because, one, the station is, what, two miles away? And we're a job ret community. We've got thousands of jobs between the Navy Base and that kind of thing. I don't know how many people we have working there, but, I don't know, this just doesn't seem... Can we count horses?
Pardon?
Can we count horses?
Uh, no. Nope. They didn't look at horses.
I mean, our trails and all that kind of, I mean, there's all of our trails and things-
Our trails are bike routes, and we definitely can look at that, but...
And as Steve said, the real practical difficulty with not adopting this is that any project, like Caprock, for example, is subject to challenge for not having done it.
I don't have a problem with that. I just think it's, I just think it's tea leaves.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I got... Well, Steve, you, in your staff report, you referred to all these things, and WRCOG is one of them. It's amazing. This thing was put before the Assembly in 2013, voted and signed by the governor with the implementation for the year 2020.
Right.
Seven years. That's what this whole long has been going on. And the best they can do for our base study for WRCOG is to come up with something like this from SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, for the 2012 base amount. No one's gone through and done any correction, have they?
No.
And that's, thanks. It is, Kevin, you are correct. Where'd they come from? And then unfortunately, Kevin, I don't know if you were on the WRCOG board when they approved all these things, but the one thing that bothers me, and this is something that comes in there, and as I was reading through all those areas and references, and this was from the WRCOG on dated November 14, 2019, it talked about TUMF funds. How will this affect our TUMF funds? Do they have any idea?
Well, I don't know. Well, "I don't know" is the best answer I can give at this point. We're still going to collect TUMF funds, and the TUMF funds are, because as I indicated, the adoption of the VMT analysis doesn't preclude a city from also requiring level of service analysis, which TUMF is more related to a level of service analysis, so we'll still continue to collect those fees. How the other cities are doing it, I don't know, but the TUMF funds, well, the TUMF funds will still be collected regardless of what the city's adopted in terms of the VMT analysis. So, in that respect, I don't think it's going to disrupt TUMF all that much.
And another reason, and I don't mean to put John's paw on this catch, on a gotcha question, but they don't know.
They don't know.
They don't know. And this was, and what I would suggest is for staff to, on November 14, 2019, the staff report on the Planning Directors Committee that talks about the TUMF funds.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't know how to apply them yet. And hopefully by now, and now that all is, you know, the WRCOGs have their meetings of what they're going to do, but they have to do a study, talk them about the feasibility of the vehicle miles traveled and how it applies.
Right.
So, we may see a change, but I'll agree with the city attorney, if we don't adopt something like this where it's worse. And then, you know, and the one of the things, and I'm going to ask you, and I know you probably don't have the answer on this vehicle, is, you know, it does address our interstate going through our roads, and how Caltrans affect on the vehicle miles traveled to and the loss of service in that. And that, this is from November 8, 2019 webinar, and it addresses that, the question and answers regarding Caltrans's input that may have on our SEQA projects and things like that, so as they apply. And you don't have, I guess I don't want to put a gotcha, but these are things that we should be aware of when we go through this, because this is a totally different way of thinking. And I think we have seen some of this, when Dominic's been in here and talked about these projects in the traffic engineering, but again, this is seven years in the making, and now they're going to, we have to, because this is the date of implementation, and there is no, we have any, there's nothing else to fall back on. We're not going to do it our own. But I would think, and I would, and Steve, the true crux behind it, the scene who wrote the bill, Steinberg, was to get people out of their cars. They don't care if you sit in long lines at an intersection, do they?
No.
They don't. Their bicycle line is, it would just make people upset, and your job now is to use mass transit, get on a bus, find a train, something to commute on other than sitting in your car. And that's what this driving through, yes. I mean, that's basically what I read, is to get you into mass transit, which if we were in New York right now, all those people that got the coronavirus would say, why do I ride the subway?
It'd be interesting to see what happens with the buses with the virus.
Yeah, if I could comment on that. I think there's something positive to be said about the vehicle miles traveled methodology. And, for example, the city of Moreno Valley, I think they have this huge area where they are building like 600 warehouses, right? And what is the impact of that project? It's not just, if you look at it, the impact on the city of Moreno Valley, right? The concept looks at the traffic generated from that, what is the impact on a more global basis? Most of those warehouses are people picking containers from Port of, Port of Long Beach and coming into Moreno Valley and so on and so forth. So, what they are trying to do is look at that total impact. In fact, our WRCOG is actually looking at developing additional fees-
Yes.
-on the TUMF that takes into account that impact, that then collects money to defray that vehicle miles traveled impact. So, it's not just impact on the regional WRCOG arterial roads, but also the impact on the freeway system, as an example.
Right, right. That's the issue that's contentious, actually. Some love it, some are like, what do you mean? Oh, next it'll be my car, so... But yeah, that's a positive right there.
Greg?
Just what you mentioned. About the container traffic from the port going out to those distribution centers in Moreno Valley. Do you recall here, a few years ago, when El Sobrante landfill was going to take trash from out of county, and they were going to be hauling transfer trucks like 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning? Does that have any type of parallel with just what you were talking about, like with container traffic, that we also import trash from other, out of areas that go to El Sobrante?
How that impacts this, it could, but I'm not making no connection.
I don't know if you can try to recall or nose into it, but I remember that issue going, that was going to be a traffic impact with importing ex-solely waste going to El Sobrante. So, Steve, a couple of questions. My understanding then is that for all future projects going forward, the developer will have to hire a traffic engineer, provide a traffic study that will have to address the VMT and level of service issues, and provide developer-funded mitigation measures.
Correct.
Okay. On bicycle parking facilities, what is our, our development standards today with new businesses? Do we require, this is a silly thing, but bike racks? There's other jurisdictions and cities that, with your project, you have to have bike racks, you have to have this to promote bicycle use. Do we do that?
The city has been inconsistent in that-
Okay.
-to be honest. The, going forward, that's going to be a standard condition-
Okay.
...for all new commercial development. The, so, in answer to your question, historically, there's no consistency. There's nothing in the code says you have to do it, but it's, some have, we've applied it in some cases and not in all.
Okay, so we're, you know, inconsistent is a good way to put it then, because that's been a requirement for quite a while in other jurisdictions that, based on the number of employees, you have, you have bicycle racks to encourage your employees to ride.
Right. And that-
And that's a planning function.
It's a planning function, and we also have in our code that's adopted many years ago as a transportation demand management section that applies to all projects that employ more than 100 people, and that's one of the management principles in there, is bike racks, showering facilities, but it's-
Is that what causes some of the inconsistency? Because, like, the bike rack should be for, if you have 10 employees even, it would-
Well, going forward, because of the new VMT analysis, that'll be-
Okay.
-that'll be required. Previously, it never, it didn't come into play too much because we didn't have the types of projects that generated that number of employees.
Sure, okay. And then my last question is, when was the last time we updated our circulation element?
Well, in the budget that I just put together today, it's been a while since 2001, but in the budget-
So, it's been 19 years since we've-
Yeah. If you look at our circulation element, it's old, and it, it's, I won't even give examples of how old it is, but it needs to be updated.
All right. And that's a next-year budget request?
Yep. What's that? What's that?
I couldn't understand you, Andy.
Well, we did, we did-
You know, that's what I like about Steve, though. I mean, it's 19 years old, you know, should we make it 21? So, we don't have a current circulation element?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Robin?
Steve, I just had a couple of questions. The first one was, what impact will this have on Norco that's maybe different from other cities in Riverside County?
Ultimately, the, as far as the city itself goes, our analysis will continue as they have been with the level of service and the mitigations that come from that. In terms of vehicle miles traveled, the- terms of vehicle miles traveled, the, tough to say how we're going to be different from other cities. For instance, if you look at the study that we were talking about, the ARCOG study, that study identifies high, high, high efficient corridors or something like that, where, for instance, Corona has one because of the mass transit train going through there. One of the things that they're looking at in the future is that a VMT mitigation might be similar to what's been adopted for their mission, where you don't have to provide the mitigation within the boundaries of the city, but you can contribute to a pot that will go towards the improvement of regional mass transit. So in that case, Norco would probably not get the same benefit that other cities would because of this. It's not, it's not in effect yet, but it's something that they're looking at doing down the road. So we'll still get, because of our level of service analysis, we'll still get our traffic, our road improvements. Whether we get a fair shake in VMT mitigations in the future remains to be seen.
Okay. And then the only other question I have, because this is going to be regional, do you see it being something that it will be, where a developer will look at Norco and look somewhere else and go, oh, I don't want to go to Norco because of the requirements of this, because they're the same in other areas?
I don't see the difference impacting Norco in terms of, of being attracted to developers. The, realistically, the mitigations that I foresee coming from VMT analysis are probably not going to be that severe, to be honest. The, you know, it could boil down to putting in bus stops and putting in bicycle parking racks, and those are not very severe things to have to incorporate. But, you know, things creep, and they, you know, they tend to start at one point and end up somewhere else years down the road.
So for Norco and the big picture, right at this time, it's going to be a matter of most projects from July 1 on would include a bus stop of some type and a bike rack?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, just talking about mass transit. Well, as we know, right now is a bad time for any kind of transportation because RTA ridership right now is down over 80% because nobody's going to work, nobody's going anywhere. They're not supposed to. But they've cut all the bus routes down to Sunday schedules, which I don't know if this is correct or not, I'd have to look. But I'd say that the number three coming through Norco to the train station and back no longer has to stop at the college right now, because there, everybody's out of school. But it probably don't make five runs a day.
Right.
And the other bus route's supposed to launch May 10th, that goes from Amazon to Limone, to Archibald, down through River Road into the train station. But what I'm getting at, when everything's normal, it would be real handy for people that work out of town if they would take those buses to the train stop and catch the train. Or if you're going the other direction, you could switch buses over at the Amazon deal, because there's a little terminal, going to be a little terminal over there, where buses are coming in from different parts of Riverside and San Bernardino County. So it would be handy if everybody would do it, but just getting, seem like down here in Southern California, it's just hard to get people to ride public transportation and everything. But anybody else have any thing they want to add? Ted?
Just to follow up. Steve, you mentioned the code, we talked to Councilman Newton. How many codes you think in our, in our planning, and those who are related to this, that we're going to have to see updates to that are going to conflict with, if we adopt this resolution?
Most of developers are, are aware of this deadline and have, they've just taken it in stride. We've got projects that were, that the proponents are hoping to get approved before July 1. Otherwise, they will have to do a new analysis. But it's not really going to impact current projects right now, because the ones that are going to come for approval after July 1 have already assumed they're going to have to do it. So they're planning on it.
Okay.
In addition, it's, to some extent, not a function of what our code requires. It's the traffic study indicating what needs to be mitigated, how to be mitigated, and it will vary from project to project to project. It's not simply, oh, well, our code requires you have to do this.
Well, and this, like I said, this has been going on since 2013 when they passed it, so they knew it was coming. But how many of our own city codes are going to be contradictory? Are we?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that it's, Sequa is the overriding quote code, and that it's, that this will require just a different way of measuring what mitigation measures are necessary.
Okay.
As a result of individual project. It's not a function of any code requirements that Norco has.
All right. I just, because you mentioned it, and that's what I was saying, how many of our other?
Well, the, the.
You'll have to go through that.
The big thing will be the circulation element, when we update the circulation element. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So not necessarily, it's not codes, but Sequa is one of the, of your four findings you have to make. So that, that's the impact on any project, would it?
Yeah, no, that.
Be in the findings, not in the codes?
Whatever the Sequa document you adopt related to a project, whether it's a mitigated negative deck or an EIR, is going to set forth, based upon this analysis, what things need to be done to mitigate the impacts of the project. But, and that's not a function of our codes particularly, it's just.
It's more of a finding, then?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Have a motion to approve? Got a motion in a second?
There are no speaker cards also on this, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash? Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our most popular item of the night. This is the City Council, City Manager Staff Communications, or I should say, second most popular. All right, we'll start with you, Robin. Greg?
Couple things. Andy, based on the, the public comment that we received on the trail, could you and staff look at the horse trail and the fencing being extended up to Angles Park? The request, the request by NHA?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. And then, the other item I have is to compliment Andy and Brian and your staff with, with Easter, what you did with the Easter egg hunt and the Easter bunny and, and all the efforts you put into staff. So my, my question for you is, I know that Paul was the walrus, who was the Easter bunny? Thank you.
I had a, I had a guy, I had a guy drive all the way up to my house Saturday to tell me who the Easter bunny was.
Dana?
I just want to remind staff and the council in our community that the census, you should have received your census survey information in the mail. And I please encourage everyone to fill out their survey, get that in as soon as possible. Let's show the other communities around us that Norco participates, and we want to be counted. And each one that is counted, that is funding that we would get for programs and services here in our city, you've received a paper copy by now, and you should receive your ID number to apply online. You can do it by paper. You can call the city clerk's office if you have questions. We have information online on our website also. It's very important to be counted. It's very important to our city and for the funding for programs in our city. So I just ask that each of you encourage any emails that you put out, any information that you remind your community that it's time to take the census. Thank you. That's all.
Steve? Brian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pull this up so you can hear me. I want to echo Councilman Newton's comments. Yes, Sunday, we did receive a visit from the Easter bunny, and it's amazing how quickly that Easter bunny traveled all over Norco, hid eggs, and even one golden egg in a special spot. So we want to thank the Easter bunny for visiting us here in Norco. It was pretty special. Tonight, I presented you with some updates related to the COVID-19 situation we have in the county. And basically, the chart that I provided you is going to be out by the county today and on all the websites. And basically, what the chart is showing is, is that the curve is flattening. At one time, when we first started this, a few weeks ago, we were doubling our number of cases in Riverside County every 4.7 days. If you look at the chart now, you're seeing that extended out to seven days. So you can see that the curve is flattening out. By all means, even though that is a positive, a lot of that is a result to the positive things that are going on in the county and the various mandates for people staying at home, wearing masks, wearing gloves, doing the proper things, and reducing social distancing. So I thought this was important for you to receive these particular things. It also looks at scenarios. This is modeling, so it's not perfect, but based on the statistics that are coming up, Riverside County Department of Public Health, as well as the other partners within the county, are looking at our situation here in the county, and they're doing modeling to look at where we're going with this particular pandemic. If we were to not continue to do what we're doing, you can also see how this thing could scale up really quickly. So I do think that's a good thing. That's a compliment to the county. I do want to comment, and I sit in on a, a number of the calls that go on for this particular thing, and it's amazing to see this and what other county, counties are doing. And I have to compliment Riverside County Public Health Emergency Management Department. They're doing an outstanding job of, one, keeping the various agencies within the county informed, as well as really being proactive in this, and also doing their test sites. So in the county, just to kind of give you a few of the facts I think is important, there are 2,105 confirmed cases. The deaths within Riverside County are 54, and recovered cases are 416. I do want to also note that the county has also instituted what they call a special SOS team, and these teams are out visiting our senior assistant living facilities to make sure that they have what they need, and two, that they're getting educated properly on, on what needs to be happening as far as health and wellness of those particular places where assistant living is assist, is going on. The county has ordered a million N95 masks. They expect to receive a shipment here very shortly to be distributed to our public safety personnel and essential workers out there in the public. In the number of test sites that have been done, Lake Elsinore Diamond Stadium is a test site, Indio Fairgrounds is a test site, Riverside Harvest Christian Fellowship Church, and Paris Southern California Fairgrounds. There's also some mobile hospitals being set up in Riverside, City of Riverside, which would include the old Sears Building in Riverside. We've done to date about 825 tests that have gone on up to, up to this point. So, and that is continuing to bump up the number of cases that they are testing for. A couple other little things I do, from a medical response, we're down about 19% from this time last year, related to 911 calls for medical response. The, the county seems to be pretty good in the sense of ventilators within the county and accessible to those locations. So the county in its EMS department has really done a very good job throughout all of the cities and agencies that are part of the county of identifying when beds, ICU units, availability, to be prepared for this coronavirus. As of right now, this surge has not happened yet. But what you'll see as our curve continues to stay flat, that that surge will not escalate. If we weren't doing some of the things that we did, and the surge was to grow, we would see a real huge spike in that, and the statistics would change drastically in that. One of the things that I thought was very impressive, and I have to thank all of the schools within the county, 2,866, 386 meals have been served in Riverside County. And there are 21 out of 24 various districts that are serving meals for the kids in their various communities and areas. 199 sites this week alone were serving meals. So I, I think that's a real important factor. Also, reaching out for daycare for essential workers is another priority within the county. And so those are just some of the things that I thought are important to you. If you have other questions, you can contact me. I also gave you a list of food pantry locations within the county and close by. And that's your COVID-19 update for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Chad? Lieutenant? Mr. Harper? Andy?
Yes. So you know, staff is still here, plugging away, doing our, our things. And but one thing is, we need to keep in mind is, is that this situation continues. And what that means, as you know, we have closed or postponed several of our commission meetings and committee meetings. There's going to be a time here very shortly when those meetings do need to take place, especially the planning commission. So we're looking for logistics in terms of how we are going to have the next planning commission meeting to make sure that important business items are, are taken care of, because it appears we are going to be in this situation for longer than we, we thought. So that is number one. We are working on the budget for fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021. And as you know, this is going to be one of the most challenging budgets that we have ever had to put together, because what happened here is very unprecedented. It happened so quickly. And the difficulty with putting this budget together is going to be that we don't even know what assumptions to make in order to, to put revenue budget together. So that's, when we get to that point, we'll be discussing it with you. Most likely, what we're going to have is a sort of a placeholder budget, if you would, and that, that will need to be flushed out down the road, perhaps at mid-year. But staff is, is doing their best, and they are trying to compile that budget. And we have our first budget study session, I believe, in, I believe is in May. The second meeting in May will be our first budget session, study session. We had a meeting today, but I'm going to, regarding a company, a company that is trying to bring exciting business here in the city of Norco with a lot of employees, potentially, more than what I initially was told. But I'm going to defer to the mayor, Mayor Protem, to talk about that briefly. That's all I.
Let Ted go ahead. We'll talk about the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to add on to Councilman Newton's thing about the, the Norco Horsemen Association. If we could have the other 10 trails, if, and we all agree that goes to Chad, so he can work with streets and trails on that from NHA. And then the. NHA. And then the, tomorrow, we would have had our George Ingalls Day tomorrow. And unfortunately, we cannot have a ceremony, but I shall like to remember George Ingalls on April 16, the day he was killed. And then our good old Rose Eldridge's day is also tomorrow. So two people here in town that made a big impact. So just remember them out there. With the senior center being closed and Ingalls Park being closed memorial, we just got to remember them still. Thank you.
Evan?
Couple, just a couple of things. One, I had, but we did have our meeting with the Norco College, the advisory board, and the Norco College is actually actively looking for a site in Corona to have a dual college. I think they've finally given up on doing one in Norco, which is, I think, good. And they, they have some funding challenges, and basically, the entire college is now on Zoom, and they're doing online teaching, everything. And so that's kind of interesting. And one of the things that Monica said, and by the way, she is the, I think we talked about this before, she's the new president, but she said that she was very proud of her staff because, like Corona Norco, everybody like in two weeks had to shift completely how they taught. And so she's very pleased how Norco's done that. I'm curious, did our letter go out to Mr. Weiner, Senator Weiner, regarding, I know you're busy with other things, but just, just remind you. And the other thing, too, that we might want to consider is, they're still pushing forward with the split role. And I think that it's an insane idea to begin with, but on top of this pandemic, you will have manufacturing run out of this state like you can't believe. It is the stupidest thing I've ever seen in my life. And if we could maybe let Senator Roth and maybe let the Assemblywoman at least just say, pull it. Whatever you have to do, quit endorsing it, stop, whatever, because it will, it will devastate the manufacturing. I don't know how to do that, but I think maybe next meeting, maybe think about something to do. And then, I don't know, Berwin, you want to, we, we got a friggin' Christmas present today. You want to talk about it?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
What was the name of that company, Andy?
Nutrational.
Use your microphone, Andy.
Company's Beta Nutritionals, which is a vitamin manufacturing company, a sister company to Goli, which is, which manufactures what, what, what appears to be the most popular vitamin out there currently. Company's growing, growing very rapidly, and they have decided to bring their, their location here, their business to Norco. If you want to talk more about that.
Now, they're going to take four, I believe it's four of these buildings over here that they just built because they're in a smaller facility in Carson. And in that smaller facility, they're manufacturing a million bottles of that one vitamin per month. And they have bring, they're going to increase their manufacturing. They'll have a point of sales here. And they're going to have between 300 and 500 employees that will come. And they're really excited about coming here and having all this extra room and everything. Because they said with the county of LA, they could get no cooperation at all on anything expanding. And everything's really exciting. And they gave, I think y'all got a little sample of what, what they put out. Greg, you can start taking those vitamins for you. Oh, it's in that little bag, I think, down there. Anyway, I'll let Kevin finish up.
Anyway, it's really, really exciting. They, they're taking all four buildings. I spoke to Karen Spiegel today. She's going to be very involved. They've got some hurdles. They've got the Health Department. They've got Edison. They've got gas. They want to upgrade all of the fiber optics in the place. They're looking so that if they ever have to switch to robotics. And it sounds like a really good company. I mean, they, they seem to really take good care of their employees and really, really, for this time period to get something like that right now is absolutely unbelievable. And so I think we need to sort of pinch ourselves, and they look like they're moving forward. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty excited about that. And I don't know, fingers crossed. Looks like it's going to be a good deal. And I said, I, we did tell them that our council is very hands-on with businesses. We tend to go to all openings, and we tend to really try to support business. And I tried the gummy, I don't want to call them gummy bears, but the gummy, the gummy vinegar, it's pretty good stuff. And there's no smell that comes from the, from the company, so we're in good shape. That's, that's about it.
And one thing that impressed me about the way they treat their employees is the ones that are off now are still getting full pay. And at Christmas time, they each got a, a month's salary. So that'll really help the economy to get something like that out here and everything. So when they come in, you guys need to go meet them and everything. Because I don't know if you've been over to those warehouses or not, since they opened them, they're huge and everything. So we're looking forward to that. They want, don't they want to start moving in here by July the 1st, or?
Correctly pointed out, they have signed a lease for the three completed warehouse building. And they are trying to do the upgrades that are necessary so that they can start moving in their, their equipment. And the goal is to begin operations there within six months. Part of the expansion plan includes the possibility that they will lease the, the three additional buildings that are going to be constructed on the current HCI site. Again, but that is still in the making. I believe Caprock, who is developing that project, is, is in the process of submitting their plans for that project. And I suppose that probably will be done in probably another year or so.
Wait.
I don't know if you know Karen Christensen, who's over at, she was the chief of staff for Karen Spiegel and John Tavoloni. She's left early, and Michelle Neeson has now been hired as the, as the person that's going to take over that job, the old city manager for Eastville. I like, I like Michelle.
Yeah. Okay, with that, thank you all for coming, and thank all you live stream people for watching, and we're adjourned.